Mr. Mayor, it is now four P M.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and happy Black History Month. We're going to get started with our work session for this month. We're going to start with our invocation by our city chaplain, Pastor Warren L. Henry.
Let us pray. Dear gracious God, we thank you for the many blessings that you have poured into our lives, individually as well as collectively. We thank you for our great city. We thank you for our great leadership, our mayor and our council, city manager, God, and all department heads and employees. We thank you for the covering in which you've given us of safety, of good health, all the things that you have provided in our lives that actually cause us to just take notice and stand up strong because you have blessed us. We ask you to bless this council meeting, bless the zoning meeting, the hearing today like never before so that all that is said, oh God, and all that is done will not be for us but for those who we serve and those who are affected by decisions that we make. But we count it all joy, and we thank you well in advance. This we pray. Let us all say amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
That's our roll call for the February eighth work session of the City of South Fulton City Council. The Honorable Catherine F. Rawl, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gums, District Two.
Present.
Your Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
Your Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
Your Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
Accountant Four.
The Honorable Natasha Williams, District Six.
Present.
The Honorable Mark Baker, District Seven.
Present.
And the Honorable Mayor Khalid.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you, thank you very much. The next item.
The next item, it's Roma numeral four, monthly reports. The first monthly report will be the finance report, and that will be provided by Karen Slaton Dixon, the city's finance director.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. I wanted to present to you the financial report for the 2021 fiscal year as of December 31st, 2021. It is actually fiscal year 2022. I apologize for that typo there. But you'll turn to the first slide for me.
Mayor, we're supposed to be seeing something. We don't see anything.
The presentation's not showing? Okay, let me go back in.
All right, thank you for that, Cory. If you go to the second page, on here we have it's showing that we've collected eighty-nine percent of the projected property tax, which includes about two-hundred-and-six-thousand in our prior year taxes. We've collected about one-hundred-and-one percent of other taxes. Okay, one-hundred-and-one percent of other taxes, and that's going to include your insurance premium tax and your alcoholic beverage excise tax and fees. And then we've collected about seventy-two percent of the IGA FID for the fire in the City of Atlanta, which includes two payments on the IGA for the fire service. I will mention that on the City of Atlanta payment, they have actually already been billed, uh, invoiced for three-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. So we actually have sent over two emails to them requesting a status on that payment. So I would expect that to be in by February here. All right, so I'll move to the next page for me. Next slide. Okay, and just going back on the finance, I'll just say overall we've collected about fifty-six percent of the projected revenue. And so on this slide, we have a summary of our expenditures as of December 31st, which is the first quarter in FY '22. So we're showing about twelve percent of the budgeted funds being spent. And on this report, I look at each department just to ensure that they're not over twenty-five percent for the year-to-date. So everybody is moving right along with staying under that twenty-five percent within the first quarter of FY '22. And so we'll go to the next page. And so on this, on the general fund year-to-date tax revenues, we're showing a collection rate of about eighty-seven point six percent with eighty-five percent of that being from the real estate taxes. And so the 2021 is actually December twenty, we're shy of about four million in collections. And then 2020, we're shy of about one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-nine-forty-one against what was actually billed and what we've actually received from the county. We'll go to the next slide. And so on here, on the general fund year-to-date local option sales tax, which is loss, we're showing a collection of twenty-one point twenty-two percent over this time in the fiscal year 21 budget with an overall collection rate of sixty-six percent as of December the 31st. Move to the next slide. Okay. And then on the general fund year-to-date T-S loss, we're showing a collection of five-point-eight percent over this time in the FY '21 budget with an overall collection rate of twenty-eight point six-three as of December 31st. Go to the next slide. Okay, and on this, the general fund summary of expenditure, this shows you, just show you a bar chart graph of the department spent based on the previous summary of expenditures that I went over early by department. Go to the next one. Okay. And so this shows here on our summary of revenues and expenditures. This is for all funds. And also just to note that I do have a meeting with the county in the morning. I'll speak with them again about the payments to the blighted properties because we don't show any revenue in that. So I need to just make sure that it's not coming in as one lump sum payment for that particular item. So move to the next slide. And so on this slide here, we show what our cash balance was as of December 31st in each of the city's accounts for a total of one-hundred-and-sixty-one point one million dollars over all the different accounts that we have money housed at this point as of December 31st. Okay, we'll go to the next slide. And so this shows a balance still of the two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-two-ninety-two in the confiscated asset account. And I will note here that in January and February, we did receive several emails from the police department indicating that more funds are being deposited into this account. And the police, they do have plans on spending some of this money according to the spending guidelines as it relates to the confiscated assets. So I would imagine within the next coming months, they're going to actually start spending that money. So that amount will change. And so we go to the next slide. All right, and so that's basically, that's going to be it. You have any questions? And I know that on the November financial update, I just want to make mention that there was a request to get an update on the ARP and the projects. And just want to let you all know that we will have that forthcoming. We actually just brought a person on board who's going to assist with the grants. And so they're jumping in, making sure that they get everything, all our reports filed. So I will have an update sent out to Mayor Council on the ARP in those particular projects. And so at this time, if anyone has any questions, that includes my financial report for December 31st, 2021.
All right, I currently have no one in the speakers queue, and I don't see any hands. So I'm going to assume that we're clear to go on to the next presentation. All right, next presentation, please.
Next presentation, City Attorney's Report, Vincent D. Hyman.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Catherine Vernon from the City Attorney's Office. Mr. Hyman is out of the office. However, he emailed his report last night to all council members.
And I see no hands. I will ask you to, sometimes we do discuss these in executive sessions. So if you, Ms. Vernet could just make yourself available for that. And then finally, our city manager's report.
Yes, the city manager's report will be presented by City Manager Tammy Saler Jones.
Good evening, Mayor Khalid. Good evening, city council members, residents of South Fulton staff. Tammy Saler Jones, your city manager. My report will be short because I know we have some, a pretty heavy agenda this evening. So I didn't want to take up too much time. But I did want to share with the council that I know Ms. Dixon, Slaton Dixon, pardon me, just went over the budget and information with you. We are working on trying to get our fiscal year adopted budget placed on our website. We're also going to be getting some hard copy budget books prepared for the mayor and the council. But we hope to have that information on our website by tomorrow. I know there have been some questions about why it had not been on there. So our staff is working, and we will get that on our website for the public to see. Of course, if anybody ever wants to see the budget, we have electronic copies available as well. The second thing I wanted to mention was our rental and mortgage assistance program. I know there's been some questions about that. In consultation with our purchasing manager, we have been advised that we will need to issue an RFP to have someone administer that rental and mortgage assistance program. The scope of work is currently being vetted, and once that's complete, we will open that up for bidding for any individuals that desire to bid on the assistance of helping to administer our rental and mortgage assistance program. And of course, that is through our American Rescue Plan fund money as well. The other thing I wanted to mention, as of this past Friday, February the fourth, I was contacted by the State Office of Personnel and Budget, and they informed me that they were in need of some payroll information to continue processing our one-thousand-dollar first responders grant that is being issued through Governor Kemp's office. We will be providing them the requested information that they need. They did tell me that there are a number of cities within the state of Georgia that are still waiting to get their thousand-dollar bonuses for their public safety employees. So I want to assure our public safety employees that we are working diligently as quickly as we can to provide all necessary documentation to the state. I was told once we submit this information, it has to go through another process for approval. So as soon as we get this, we will issue it out to all eligible individuals. And I do want to thank Mr. Harvey Davis, one of our South Fulton residents, who actually had shared with me that he passed along my contact information to the state office so that they could, you know, check into the status of our application. So we appreciate Mr. Davis. We appreciate the mayor and the council, your support in this. And we, again, we want to assure our public safety employees that as soon as we receive this information in these grants, we will issue those out as soon as possible. Mayor, with that, that's all I have at this time.
All right, I see. I see Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you for recognizing me. Ms. Saler Jones, can you clarify? Because there's a lot of confusion around this. There is the CARES Act, which was funded by, which funded the Gladiator Pay, correct?
That is correct.
And then there's the American Rescue Funds, which, in which Chief Jones is going to give us a presentation on how he prefers to handle bonuses and pay in compensation today. Am I correct?
Yes, but that is different from the American Rescue Plan. The council, you all approved in October, the uses of the American Rescue Plan, the eleven million-plus dollars that we received from the federal government included in that particular plan. I had given you a recommendation that we include what we call premium pay for our public safety, and also I believe it was called first responder. I'm trying to grab my paperwork here. It is the public safety employees responding to health emergencies. And then it is a premium pay, and this is compensation to essential workers who are at risk of exposure to COVID-19. So that was, premium pay was five-hundred-thousand dollars. And then the public safety employees responding to health emergencies, we allocated eight-hundred-thousand dollars. That is going to be different than what our fire chief is going to be presenting to you today.
Okay, so the premium pay and what was the other category you called? You said premium pay, and what was the category?
The other category is public safety employees responding to health emergency.
Okay, so when, what are we planning, what are we planning to do with those funds?
Well, the purpose of those funds, it's basically, it's a premium pay to employees that are deemed essential and have worked or continued to work under hazardous conditions, reimbursement to the city for regular and overtime payroll expenses for eligible public safety personnel. And so we are working right now. Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah, I wanted to hear the rest of your explanation. You all are working right now to do what?
We're working right now, the team, so we can begin to roll out usage of this American Rescue Plan money. I had presented this information, and we have until December 31st, 2024 to obligate the American Rescue Plan fund money. And then we have until December 31st, 2026 to spend the American Rescue Plan funds. But of course, you know, we are trying to.
Will this premium pay go to our first responders in the line of, in the form of pay increases based on performance? Or will it go to employees based on bonus structure?
That's one of the things that we're still trying to clarify, and I can provide some information to you to address that question because I wasn't prepared to address that today. I'm sorry. But I can definitely follow back up with you.
And so we've allocated, you said about five-hundred-thousand towards that?
We allocated five-hundred-thousand to premium pay and eight-hundred-thousand to public safety employees responding to health emergency. It's two different categories.
Okay, so Ms. Saler Jones.
Most of them essentially go to that.
Ms. Saler Jones, what the, what is a concern is, we need to. um, we need to get a plan together on how we are going to compensate our first responders and our um, uh, public safety employees with this money. And uh, if you can, would you please pu- uh, bring it back to the council the next work session because um, there is a lot of public safety and and um, public safety employees who feel who are very upset who not, who about this money not being dispersed to them. Um, they know that we have, the council have approved money, but they are very disappointed that this money has not been dispersed to them.
We haven't received it all. Do they, are they aware we haven't received it all? We get a net, a second allotment in May. So we haven't even received all of our money yet.
But of the money we have received, Miss Sallor Jones, how much of it is supposed to go to premium pay and public safety? Um. Responds, how much of that?
It's two different categories again. Um, and if I need to send out the uh, presentation information again, I don't have a problem doing that.
Understand that. I'm not, that's not my question. I'm not questioning the two categories. I'm questioning of the categories, the five hundred thousand dollars and the eight hundred thousand dollar bucket. How much of that money do we have in-house now allocated to this, to these two buckets? The premium pay and the public safety pay. And the public safety.
The first amount that we got, um, uh, which was on May of twenty twenty one, we received five point six million. And then we received another five point six million in May of this year. So, I mean, all of our projects, of course.
I don't, Miss Sallor Jones, I I don't mean to cut you off, but I want to really move on because I know my other colleagues have questions. We already have five point six million in the door, correct?
That is correct.
Of the five point six million, you gave us a plan. Of that five, six million, you gave us a recommendation on how we should spend that money. My question is, of that five, six million, that recommended, how much of that money is supposed to go to premium pay for public safety bucket in a uh, and you said it was another bucket, public? Premium pay and then there was a public safety bucket. How much of that five point five million is supposed to go in those buckets?
Okay, let me, let me. Now like this, we have allocated five hundred thousand under premium pay. And then the other bucket is called public safety employees responding to health emergencies. That one has hundred thousand.
Okay, so that's money we currently have in-house right now, correct?
I guess you can say it's in-house, but then don't forget, you know, the other the objects that I have included um, in the entire project scope as well. So if you're asking me if we have.
Right, Miss Sallor Jones, I'm not asking about the other projects. I am honing in on public safety. Premium pay and public safety employees bucket. Of that five million, how much of that money is supposed to go towards premium pay and public safety employees, the two buckets? I'm not talking about what projects were that we have that you recommended. I am specifically honing in on public safety premium pay.
So it's the five hundred thousand. That was the first amount that was, that was allocated and the first amount that we have out of the five point six million.
Okay, so we are approaching another, we are approaching almost a year. We're, we're over six months. And my question to you, and I'm not being condescending, I am really asking out of the concern of our public safety division, who's concerned about not receiving money they feel that we have. This council have, or this city has, and haven't been dispersed to them. I guess my question is, why is it taking so long for us to come up with a plan on how we're going to compensate our and first responder employees with premium pay? Because it's been over six months now.
Councilmember Willis, I realize it's been over six months, but this is federal money we're dealing with. And you know, at some point, we're going to be possibly audited on this money. And we have been very strategic about how we're going to put a plan and what we need to do with it. We're not trying to hold anything from our employees and I really hope that they don't think that that's what we're trying to do. I mean, as they see, we were very intentional about including something in the use of that money specifically for public safety. And I'm, I'll be, I'll be glad to address any questions. You know, I hope the council knows that you guys can call me at any time in advance of the council meetings, you know, so I can be a little bit more prepared to address the questions that you have.
Okay, Mayor, do you have anybody else in the queue? Because I'll come back. Um, if if there's somebody else in the queue that needs to speak.
There is.
Okay, can you come back to me?
Thank you um, for recognizing me. Uh, I have a follow-up question. You talked about the mortgage and rent assistance. And I know under the CARES Act, we had a provider who uh, was dis- was distributing money to individuals who needed assistance. One, did we address the entire applicant pool who um, may have been eligible that say we ran out, exhausted those funds? That's my first question. And second, um, I know you talked about for, you know, going through a RFP and all of that. We can't use that vendor that we already had in place. That's a question, so. To move the dollars, wanting to get it to to those individuals who need the help.
That was part of the question that we posed to our staff and in our procurement office. And I was told that we cannot use that vendor. We will have to go back out for an RFP again. Because that particular vendor was used for cares and their uh, contract with the city terminated uh, September twenty twenty one.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, and the second part, though, in terms of people who may have been on that list that needed help and may not have gotten it. Are we going to start and and look at, or at least let those individuals know about the new process um, to get assistance? And I also saw where Fulton County also allocated additional twenty five million for rental assistance and that would cover people who live in our area as well.
Yes, ma'am. The answer to that question is yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, back to Councilwoman Willis.
Miss Sallor Jones, um, we need to get some communication out to our employees. You said you hope that they don't feel that we are withholding money, but they do. There have been very public comments on social media. There's been very forward comments to this council. We really need you to get communication out to these employees. We need a plan by the next workshop session, please.
Okay, yes, ma'am. We can get that for you.
We don't need to go another thirty days without some kind of communication and a plan on how this money needs to be allocated for premium pay and public safety.
Okay, yes, ma'am. We can get that in the next thirty days for you. And again, I do want to assure this council, our team, our ARP staff team, I mean, we have been meeting periodically. Um, now that we have our new finance director on board, she's been leading uh, those meetings for me. We have all of our staff, uh, point of contacts uh, related to the specific uh, project areas uh, they have been meeting. Um, so I do, you know, want you guys to know that even though I may not have communicated that to you, we do consistently meet to go over uh, our projects and the status of those projects and the uses of the money.
For the, for the bonus structure that came from the governor, when was the application submitted?
The application was submitted in December.
Okay, and you said they just said, they just um, reached out to you last Monday, asking for additional information?
No, ma'am. They reached out to me on Friday, February the fourth.
And that is um, the money that will put a thousand dollars in all of our first responder pockets, right, from the state?
Yes, ma'am. Those who are eligible, those who are eligible, I believe they have to be have to have been employees of the city during a particular timeframe.
Okay, thank you. Where are you?
Thank you. Um, and I want to uh, thank uh, our finance director, uh, Ms. Slaton Dixon, our city attorney, uh, Catherine Vernet and uh, you, Madam City Manager Sallor Jones for your report. I will just uh, echo your sentiments about wanting to be careful with this federal money. We're going to have some more conversations about ARP later on in uh, this meeting. But I know that I have been talking with people and and Congresswoman, uh, Nikima Williams' office, our Congresswoman, one of our congresspeople, uh, as well as mayors and county commissioners from all over. And these American Rescue Plan Fund rules